We'll go ahead and just say welcome to our work session. And we have a very limited agenda tonight, but anyway, we'll turn it over to the folks that have items on the agenda, Mr. Trantham or Ms. Dr. Nolte.
Before we let Todd get started, we did advertise this as work session, special called session, so I don't know that you'll have to take any action, but if you decide, we're covered legally on the notifying people, if you want to take action on any of this, then you could go into a session.
My concern was when I talked to Dr. Bill and Mr. Trantham about it is, is if time was so of the essence, if we needed to make a move on it, that's the reason I wanted us to be able to do so.
And we didn't know then as much as we know now.
All right.
But anyway, just know that that's out there for you. If you need it, I don't know that you'll need it, but I'll turn it over to Todd. He's done most of the background work on it. He's talked obviously with Joe some and also with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Nolte. I'm just going to go through this project proposal and we can kind of go page by page. I can, excuse me, do my best to explain the situation and the rationale to you as we go through there. On the first page gives you the objective. I'll just say this. We were made aware several months ago of some new regulations by the EPA that of course trickled down to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and then inevitably to us concerning our underground storage tanks. Some of the tests that many of the new tanks are required to undergo for several years, those of us that had tanks that were several years old were grandfathered into not having to do those tests. One of those tests is a tank tightness test, which measures the, not the tightness of the tank from is it leaking fluid from the bottom, but it also measures the tightness of the airspace at the top of the tank. Is it, you know, so they basically put it under pressure and see if it leaks down. And so that particular test is the test that we failed when the company came to do that. We decided to go ahead and get that process. Once, we knew that the state had really decided on what their standards were going to be, we went ahead and began that process of testing our tanks, knowing that these were tests that we had never had in the past been required to take. And one of our tanks completely failed that test. And then a couple of the other tanks, we believe more than likely would have failed it if we had continued that process at that point. So we stopped at that point, once we had that first failure, not wanting to go any further until we had a little bit more information. Just to give you a little bit of background, we fuel about five to eight hundred gallons of gasoline and about twenty-five hundred gallons of road diesel weekly. So in a month's time, we, it is very, it is not unusual for us to go through 10,000 gallons of diesel in a month as a school district. So we have three tanks. Those tanks were installed in May of 1993 when the bus garage was built. They are a fiber, they are a steel composite tank, so they have a steel as well as a composite mixture that's in there with those to try to help with rust. And up to this point, we have no records either through our inspections or even through the records that we're required to keep of any kind of leak in those tanks as far as a wet leak, which is the majority of what we've had to test up till recently is for wet leaks. You know, do we have, have we lost any product that we can't account for in those tanks? And we have not had any issues there. Like I said, then these new tests are looking at some spaces that we've not had tests in the past. And so that is what, what has kind of thrown us in this mess. With those, all three of those, we even though we just really use primarily two of those tanks, the diesel tank and the fuel tank, there are three 10,000 gallon tanks that are underground at the bus garage that all have to be inspected by the UST Division of the Department of Environmental Quality on a semi-annual basis. I think they typically come around every two to three years to actually check. We do have to license them every year. And we do have to keep paperwork from all that. So when they come by and inspect, they're looking at our, all of our records to make sure that we have been monitoring the environmental impact of those tanks. I wanted to reemphasize that the leak that we feel like we have on our tanks is more than likely, any and all of those leaks on any of the three tanks, including the one we know about, are called dry leaks. In other words, they are in the dry space at the top of the tank, not in the wet space underneath. So this is not something that we feel like from an environmental standpoint is something that's been leaching out product into, into the soil space underneath that parking garage, or that parking structure there at the, at the bus garage. It is, it is something that we feel like is contained to the tanks. We are asking and are in the process, I apologize, we haven't gotten that settled yet, but in this process, we are going to ask a second vendor to give us a second opinion. I feel very comfortable in the, in the quality of the first vendor's opinion, but when you're talking about the kind of money we're looking at to replace three, three underground tanks, I feel better than I felt like you would feel better, knowing that, that we have, we're going to ask for a second opinion before we decide our final step in moving forward. It just takes a little bit of time. With these, with these new standards that are put into place, we are not the only person, from what I can understand, the only, we're not the only group that is, is in this position with older underground storage tanks that are, they're having trouble getting those to pass some of these new requirements. And so I imagine there's going to be several people that are having these same conversations, either in, in other facilities across the state or across the country that might be in this same, same kind of predicament that we're in with older tanks.
How do we get by this long?
What's that?
That how do we get by this long? Really? I mean, mine's been out for years and insurance was also a higher rate with underground storage tanks as well, so.
What, what I explained to them before, before you came in here was that, that basically the test that we have failed is a new test that we had because of the age of our tanks been grandfathered into. And so our, basically, we failed the tightness test. So the, the air structure, the air compartment at the top of the tank will not hold its, its tightness when put under pressure. That vacuum, it loses that vacuum. And so that, that is the, that is the issue that we've got. We feel like, we know we have that in one tank. We feel like we probably have that in all three. And so it's, it's time for us to look at making a, a determining, a decision on how we move forward. So if we look down at the bottom of the proposal that I'm giving you tonight as far as the solution for this before we move forward, I'm just going to go ahead and cut right to the, to the chase and then we can look at the, the actual cost and the projected budget. But three stages, three things that we would have to do. First, we would have to, during the time period, because after October of this year, we will not be able to place fuel in those tanks. We will have to, at the very minimum, place those in a temporary closure status in order to leave those underground, which means we have to drain them down to within an inch of the bottom and lock the caps and then fill out some paperwork and send it to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. But in doing so, we're going to have to find some fuel. We do have a card system that would allow our gasoline and even our diesel vehicles that are used as fleet vehicles to be fueled at a regular filling station, just like, just like any of us would be fueling our vehicles. You would just use a card from the system rather than a card from your pocket to fill those up. It's the same, actually, it's the same card that we're using right now to fuel at our, at our shop. So they're very familiar with using those cards. When you, when they fill up at our shop, they have to slide that card and that's what takes the fuel out of the tank and puts it into their vehicle and charges it to the appropriate vehicle in the computer system. So we would just open that up so that not only could they use them on the hill at our, at our tube pumps, but they could use those at any WEX-approved facility, which most of those gas stations around here, there's very few that would not take that card. Second thing we'd need to do is engineer and, and install a new tank at the bus garage. My recommendation would be to go with an above-ground tank rather than a below-ground tank. There is a few things I'll mention about some things we would have to do differently by going above ground, but it just, everything, everything that I've researched and shows says that it is much safer for you to go above ground than go below ground with a, with a tank from a liability standpoint, from everybody, if you ask most people, unless they just don't have room for an above-ground tank, they go, that's what they're going to do. And then the third thing we'll have to do in some way, shape, form, or fashion is permanently close the tanks we have. And there's a couple of options there, but those are not going to be options that are necessarily going to be in our control. Those are going to be options that an engineer with the Department of Environmental Quality is going to make the final decision on, do we have to take those tanks out of the ground or do we have, are we going to be able to fill those tanks in place? And so that's, even though there's a couple of options there, and in talking to our, our consultant, he feels like because we have a very clean record, we don't have any, any fails on our inspections, there's nothing there to, to show him that we have, have been leaching product into the ground. He feels like that, that at least they would hear the, you know, hear a conversation about whether there would be a negative environmental impact from either the, the building that's close to those tanks, our fuel island that's close to those tanks, or the, the actual landfill end of waste line, which is very close to those tanks. And so there's a chance that when the engineers look at it, they may say, just because of the liability of where you're at, you may be able to close that in place, which means we would fill it with a inert material and close those tanks off permanently rather than having to take those out of the ground. So that's, that's one of the wild cards there as far as cost, is, is just not knowing exactly what option we're going to have. But what we will do in October, pending your approval of this project, is we will move those into what's called a temporary closure status. And then we will wait until we decide exactly what we want to do before we make an option on, on actually closing the tanks. If you want to go to page three, third page, it kind of gives you two pictures. I just want to give you a visual reference of where our, our tanks sit. They sit at our property parallel to the bus garage, just behind the, the garage itself, between the garage and the fuel island. And if you look on that hill there where the vents are, that is pretty much the end of waste line for the, the county landfill. So there's a, you know, there's going to be a little bit of work in this whole process of working with the county to, to coordinate and make sure that in the process of however we choose to close those tanks, that, that it, it doesn't somehow interfere with what they have planned for what they're going to do with the landfill. And the same really goes, goes for, for what we, for where we choose as a final location for the, the new tanks and the new dispensary for our, for our fuel. We'll have to coordinate that with them as well. We certainly don't want to install something that two or three years from now, we're having a conversation about needing to move it to somewhere else. We want, we want that to be a, a permanent move, or at least a semi-permanent move. If you turn to the next page, that's going to give you a, just an idea of the proposed tank. I can say this about it. The tank that we're looking at is, is one, and this is, this is really an, an option that's going to cut our costs just a little bit. Rather than having multiple tanks like we do now, we're asking, we asked a vendor to quote us a single tank. It's a single 20,000 gallon tank. It will sit on its side rather than up in the air. And it will be baffled and divided so that it is about 15,000 in diesel fuel and about 5,000 in gasoline. Assuming that we can only fill it to 90%, that, that means our capacity, our capacity for diesel fuel is going to be about 13,500 gallons. Our capacity for gasoline will be about 4,500 gallons. We want to keep that gasoline number low because what I've found is we don't use quite as much gasoline. And if you, if you buy more gasoline than what you can use in a month, by the time you get to two, month two, or month two and a half, you know, you've got some really nasty gasoline in there that you're trying to put into your vehicles. And so it is much better if you can keep that amount of gasoline down to just what you can use in a short period of time. So if, if you were to come to the office and look at our records, you see that even though we've got a 10,000 gallon tank, we don't order but about 1,000 gallons at a time, 2,000 gallons at a time, because we're trying to keep that, that gas as fresh as we can, so we're not putting old gas in vehicles. We, we did that in the last year. Before that, we were bound to a contract where we had to buy a full load at one time. And we've had some real issues with vehicles, because when you're buying 9,000 gallons of fuel and you're not using but about 4,000 gallons a month, at the end of two and, two and a half months later, you know, you can imagine what that gas, what kind of quality of gas we're putting in vehicles. So that, that is kind of the reason, the reasoning behind that. We will have to put this in a pretty solid place. By my calculations, looking at the size of this tank and the, the potential weight of the tank, along with the potential fuel weight that would go in it, we would be at about 165,000 pounds when it's fully loaded on both sides. And so it will certainly have to be, have to be on a solid foundation in order to be able to hold that. And because of the site, the site that we have at the bus garage, it's going to take a little bit of foundation work and some study just to make sure that we place it in a, in a safe location, a location that's not going to have issues in the, in the future.
Todd, do they normally drop a full tank or a diesel up there, or do y'all usually get less than a tanker load?
I try to time it. I, I want them to bring, they like to bring a full load. Now, there have been some times that I have been able to piggyback off of somebody else. They'll call me and say, Todd, I'm bringing 6,000 gallons of fuel to the mountains. Do you have enough room for 3,000 gallons of diesel? And I'll take it if I've got room for it.
About 14,000 gallons would be, you could get, that'd be more than two tankers, correct?
It'll be about a tanker and a half of diesel. But what I typically do is they typically, when I order it, I will order, I will order diesel and gas together. I'll order a, a section of gas along with it. So I may order, typically, a tanker for us can hold about a little over 8,000, 8,500 gallons, depending on the, the mixture, because diesel and gas don't weigh the same. So it really depends on how much of each you get as to how much you can get on there. But I typically will buy, let's say, 8,000 gallons of diesel and 1,000 gallons of gas and bring it in one load in order to fill up, in order to fill up both tanks and get us to where we need to be.
You want to have a tank that's low enough you can hold a full tank?
Yes. Well, you want to be able to, you want to be able to hold a full tank. But the other thing that you want to be able to do is you want to be able to leverage, you want to have a tank that's, that's big enough, especially on our diesel side, so that we can watch the cost of diesel and, and have a, a large enough margin to where if we anticipate that it's high right now, but it's going to drop next week, that we can wait three or four days before we buy. When you're buying 10,000 gallons and you can save even, even three or four or five cents every time you order by timing it right, over the course of a year, you're going to save a substantial amount of money. And so that, that's, that is the other benefit you get from having a, a tank that's a little bit larger than the capacity of a tanker.
You never have too big a tank.
When were those tanks put in?
Those tanks were put in, in May of 1993. If you want to go to the next page, which is the budget page, I included a couple of things on the budget page. The first one is the actual cost to switch to off-site fuel because off-site fuel definitely is not going to be a freebie. It is not a wash by any means when we move from bulk fuel to off-site fuel. And my first, the first thing I wanted to do was to make sure that, you know, spending a ton of money on putting a new tank up there was justified, that we, we were not saving a fraction of, of the cost of gas so that it would take us years and years to recoup our cost. I met with Angie, my, my first number, you can see the, the number on this budget page is 133,000. The first time I met with her, my number was right around 100,000. And, and that is a really conservative number. This is more, the 133 is really a middle-of-the-road number. I still feel very safe with that number. You can see the fueling off-site for gas. We, we use about 50,000 gallons of gas in a year. And right now, I think the, the Fourth of June was the date that I used. If I took the average cost of gas in, in Haywood County, I subtracted the fuel tax from it because we are exempt from the fuel tax. And then I compared that cost to what our cost that same day was to buy it in bulk. There was about a 50 cent difference between the two. And so that means that, you know, for, for just for our gas that we would purchase during this project, if it lasted a year, the annual cost would be right at $25,000. The diesel, actually, you can see there's a little bit of a discrepancy at the top between what I have in the writing page. I wrote this portion of the, of the, of the report before I actually had my numbers. So I went back after I had real numbers and fed those into the spreadsheet. I made a mistake on the top line of not going back and editing that 46 cents in the actual narrative. But fueling off-site diesel, we have been coordinating with a couple of, of local companies that could provide us bulk diesel, that we could take our fuel truck by and actually fill it up 500 or 600 gallons at a time and then be billed at the end of the week for it. For those, it looks like we're in the range of about 60, between 50 and 64 cents. The 64 cents is an actual number. I'm hopeful that we may get a little bit lower than that when we actually get to it. But, but on the day that I compared, our cost versus, our cost had we bought that fuel that day from a local vendor, there was 64 cents difference between the two. So that means if we were to do that for a year, that's right at $73,000 difference between the, the cost of that 115,000 gallons that we would go through in a year out of a tank that we buy in bulk. So you can see that there's a substantial amount of difference there. The other thing I put in is the possibility of an off-site, the, the office cost for an off-site. And this is really not something we're asking for right now. This is a reality that if we were to do this year after year after year, it would probably take another staff member to do that. Because when you're talking about somewhere around 20 to 25 transactions a day, and those are not easy transactions to, to take out of one system and transfer into another. The system now automatically does that. It's automated. So when you get fuel, it automates it in from, from our, our accounting system and our fuel system coordinate and go back together. But unfortunately, when you go to start using fuel cards, that has to be done manually. And so there's going to be a cost to that. I, I hope that we don't have to do that next year, but, but that is a very real possibility if we get bogged down in that process. We're going to do everything we can not to have to add that extra person. But I wanted to put that in there because if we were comparing apples to apples and looking at what our cost would be if we decided to not replace those tanks and to just fuel off-site from now on, there would be an office cost that would go along with that as well. Some risk and exposures, I think it's just fair to, to know when we go off-site that there are some of those. Finding fuel in a fuel shortage, right now, we are able to control that. If myself and many of the other directors at direct fuel, fuel districts and the transportation departments have the ability with, with 10,000 gallons of storage to work together, when we see a nasty storm moving into the Gulf, we'll work together to make sure, hey, I, I can't hold a full tanker and Buncombe can't hold a full tanker, Jackson can't, but together we could. So I'm going to order my 2,500 to top off and they're going to order 2,000 to top off and they're going to order a couple thousand to top off. And before that storm gets here, we're, we're topped off and have as much fuel as we can hold. So that if something happens to refineries in Louisiana, refineries in, in South Texas, we're not going to be impacted by that. Unfortunately, when we start depending on an outside service for that fuel, we're not going to be able to do that. And so there is a potential, we, if, if we moved this and had a nasty storm in the fall, that we could possibly have to, have to modify school routes. I'm not saying we're going to close school, but we may have to mod, run modified school bus routes in order to save enough fuel to be able to keep buses running, running to, to locations and communities rather than running every single road and picking up at doors. So just keep that in mind. That, that is an absolute risk that goes along with that. There is a risk of fraudulent charges. Anytime you open up and you give people an opportunity to, to buy fuel off-site, there's going to be a risk of, of some fraudulent charges that, that myself and other directors are going to have to watch in their departments. And that's just one of those things we're going to have to, to understand. That is a risk. That is an exposure that we will have. And we'll have to have some conversations about, about making sure that we monitor that. And there, there's not really any way on the front end to protect it from happening. It can absolutely happen, but we are going to do our best to keep it from happening and minimize that risk as much as possible. There is some additional work and then of course you can see the 133,000, there's an additional cost to doing that. The next page that you turn over, that gives you the cost of the actual tank install. This is the best estimate we could have without actually going out and getting quotes. But from all the research I've done, as well as from the, the people that I have talked to in the business, they feel like installing one tank, we're looking at somewhere around $300,000. That number could fluctuate up or down depending on the site that's chosen. If we're putting this on, on a solid site with a flat foundation and no grading that has to be done, you know, we could easily be $300,000. We decide to put this in somewhere that is not shovel-ready, so to speak. There could be a substantial additional cost to get, get it ready to hold 165,000 pounds of, of liquid weight on top of it. So that's just something we, we, there's an unknown factor there. But if you take that number, that $310,000, and look at it compared to what our, our cost could be projected for a year, we're going to break even. You know, this, this is a tank that should last us 20 or more years and we're going to break even in year two or year three, depending on the actual cost. That's not, that's not a bad return on your investment when you look at how much we're actually putting into it with what we're going to gain back over time. There is one thing that we will have to do if we go above ground. We will have to add a pollution policy to our existing coverage for those tanks. Tanks that are underground, there's a, a, a way that the state protects against catastrophic loss with underground tanks. Part of your payment, when you pay a fee and a licensing fee for an underground tank, part of that goes into a, into a, an account that's used as, as, used to help recover those catastrophic costs. But, but with us going above ground, we would be responsible for that. And so the, the best practice and recommendation of most of those people I've talked to has been to add a, a pollution policy to, to cover that tank so that we have that in place when we put that tank above ground, just in case you were to have, you know, a tank leak and it leak out, get into a stream and, and cause a, a ton of damage. You've got at least something to protect you from, from the exposure there. The third and last part that you have there in front of you is the estimated cost to permanently close those three UST tanks that we have in the back. If we close in place, we're looking at, at a very minimal cost, because we're really just paying for the product and the concrete, the, the product to put in it, the inert material to put in it, and then the concrete to top off all those holes and to, and to, and to get it closed off permanently. So that is a much lower cost than the cost of, of actually breaking that concrete up, going in there, getting all three of those tanks out. And the second thing with that cost, the $250,000 that is estimated on that, that could go, that could go either way. It could be a lot cheaper than that. If they get in there and see a lot of pollution and, and they have to dig down and take out a lot more material than what they expect, that number could go way up. So.
You have to have ground checks with an underground. They get tested soil and, yeah.
So if, if we, if the EPA feels like, if the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality feels like that we have, have justified that our tanks are safe and that, and that they would pose some significant structural issues if we were to take those out of the ground and they chose to leave them in there, that, that cost for us will be, will be far less than it will be if we have to take them out. But the, the big part of that in the second half is that, that my plan would be, my proposal and recommendation to you would be, that unless we absolutely have to take those out now to make room for a new tank, which I, I hope that we don't, it would be to leave those in a temporary closure status this year to pay for the first half of this project, which is getting the new tanks installed and getting those up and running while we leave those other tanks in a temporary closure state. And then in the 1920 budget year, maybe even the 2021 budget year, depending on what our, what our budget looks like, at that point, go back and address removing those tanks so that we don't have to try to bite both of these off at the, in the same budget year.
I'm sorry I was late, but just a question on this. If you were, have you already got a site, I mean, has anybody looked to see where we might could place the above-ground tank yet?
We, we have not. We have, we have had some informal conversations. We wanted to be very, very careful. I, I wanted to make, I wanted to make sure that before we, we did a lot of work and went out into the community and talked to a lot of people about where and how we might do this, I wanted to make sure we had the opportunity to talk to you guys first and bring you up to speed on, on the circumstances of the situation. I didn't want to, I didn't want to be going out and having those conversations and then some of you guys find out that, hey, we're talking about replacing these and I hadn't heard anything about it. And so we want to be really, really careful about that. We have some ideas, but I think it's going to take bringing an engineer in or someone in to really look and say, that's not a good idea, or yeah, you can do that, especially with the fact that we're sitting so close to the landfill.
There's possibly an idea of re, of using the current fueling pumps, that area and have the tanks.
That, that is a possibility. I don't know.
On the landfill, we don't know.
I don't know. I know that there, there's some limitations on how close to that end of waste line we have to be. I think that the tanks that we have now, the location that we have now would not pass. If, the location that they were allowed to place those tanks in in 1993 is not a location that we would ever be able to, to put them today. And so we, we are fully expecting with this project that not only we're looking at replacing the tanks, but we're more than likely replacing the, the fuel island as well and moving it to another location.
If, if I could just interject, we talked about this, we've talked about it a couple of times. Step number one is let you guys know what we know. And we know a lot more today than when, even when we scheduled the meeting. Step two would be to talk to our neighbors, the county, who have property that abuts ours and has a landfill there, and make sure that they and we are both on the same page as to how we want that to happen. So when we talk to state officials, we have the county and the school system making the same request about, and we believe that will press, we can't speak for the commissioners, but we believe with the, the closeness of the tanks to our building and the closeness of the tanks to the landfill, we, we would work to see if the commissioners would be in agreement to seek fill-in place. And that would be our very next step, that we would ask you to be able to begin having those conversations after tonight, sometime in the near future. And then, you know, shut them down, start the external fuel process. And then as Todd said, really try to do the project, if engineers and other people permitted, over a two-year period. That gives you two years of revenues. Sorry, my phone's going up. I'll make sure that's not a principle for just a second. But do that over a two-year period, which would be manageable under the budget. And who knows, given our conversations with the commissioners, and this is about a one in every 20 or 25-year expense, we could talk. we could talk to them about whether or not they could help. It's different than current expense because it's capital. So that was sort of our plan. Make sure you know, enter into some conversations with them and really you're talking about at least a three-phase project.
Well, when you're talking about temporarily closing in October, are you shutting down the whole pump or you still don't be able to use?
No, when 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 we, by October, we must either be able to pass a tightness test or we have to move them into temporary closure status in order to comply with the law.
All right, now here's the, here's the next.
One tank or all of them? We we will more than likely have to close all of them. I am, I I I'm not going, being naive enough to sit here and say that's absolutely a given, but I am, I am making preparations right now for all three tanks to to not be able to pass that tightness test. Like I said, I'll know more when this, when we get this scheduled and have a second company come in. They're going to do a a full assessment of all three tanks to make sure that we don't have anything that we could salvage. If we could salvage our diesel tank, if we could get it to pass a tightness test, we just close the gas tank down, we just close, you know, and we would just have to then get gas offsite, we would able to bulk fuel our diesel throughout the project, which would be ideal. But I'll not know more about that part of it until we can actually have this second assessment.
That that was my question was, if you don't have something done till October, you're shutting down your tanks, then where are you gonna get your diesel and where are you gonna get your gas? That means you're gonna, either one diesel you're gonna pay in your fuel trucks and go out to each bus, so on, so on.
Right.
Gas, you've got to start giving cards out.
They already have those cards. Everybody, everybody that would be fueling already has a card. The card is locked, they can, the only place they can fuel with those cards right now is at our bus garage out of the two, our two dispensers. They look just like a dispenser, you'd go to the, you'd go across here to the gas station, you punch, you push your card in, you'd ask for the the vehicle number, it'd ask for the mileage, and then you pump. And so it would, it would really be for us nothing more than going into the computer and activating that card so it can fuel offsite, not just onsite. So that part of that process is fairly quick and easy to to get get done. As far as mitigating the the actual diesel fuel, we've already had a conversation with a local company that holds enough diesel fuel to be able to serve us and has the ability to take off the excise tax as well. And so what they're looking at between both of those is is giving us that fuel at at that cost. So we know we can go by by there right now. If we if we had to do this today, we'd, and 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 so when this was an emergency was when we didn't know how we were going to get fuel. I began breathing much easier after we had a plan that if I had to shut, if I, if they came in today and said, Todd, you have to shut these down, we knew we could get diesel fuel to fuel buses and I knew I could maintain our fleet and keep them fueled up and running through through the project. If we had to do this tonight, we could, we could make this work. It would not be, it would not be pretty, and I'm not gonna say it wouldn't be painless, but it would at the very least be doable.
Well, I guess, and I guess the next question I have got to ask is, okay, you've gave all three of these scenarios, what's your next step?
Well, for for me, I think it it is getting your your approval to move forward, to to begin to go ahead and do a site study, make a determination of a possible site for for a fuel island, to coordinate that with with the county and make sure that that fits not only our long-range plan, but the long-range plan for the county government for the landfill site a- as it sits now. And to then be able to 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 go out and get bids for the project based on that that site location and bring those back to you for approval.
So based on the research, money-wise, efficiency, the onsite fuel tanks is still the better way to go, in your opinion, as of right now?
Oh, if if you look, if you look at it over the cost of a twenty, as a twenty-year project, if we were to fuel offsite just using fuel cars for the next twenty years, you're looking at about, at a cost of about two and a half million dollars. If we look at doing this through a fuel tank, additional cost, not the actual cost, but the additional cost of what it would be, if we if we actually purchased this fuel tank and maintain it, which there's a cost to maintaining it, you're looking at at a total cost over that same period of time, that same twenty years of about four-hundred thousand dollars. You'll break even at somewhere around year three and everything from year three on, you're probably, you're more profitable to have made this investment. Now, that is considering the the removal of the tanks that we have now as being a sunk cost and not and not including those on either of the two options. Because regardless of what we do, we're gonna have to remove those tanks. So that's not a cost.
You're gonna have to do something with it, maybe not remove them, but maybe.
That is, that's a, that's a cost that doesn't, that doesn't figure into that because you're gonna have to remove those tanks regardless of what you do with the other two.
Well, I mean, I don't know whether it needs, I mean, or or do we need a vote for him to go ahead, motion, or are we just direct? If that's which way you want to go, go ahead, you know, figure it out and then whenever you need a yes or okay on the money-wise, then you can come back.
Well, I've got a few more questions. The inert materials, that sand?
Um, it 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 will depend. In in many cases, they 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 ask you to use at least a portion of concrete. Sometimes they'll let you fill it up with gravel to a certain point and then go beyond that gravel and put and put concrete, you know, the cheapest concrete you can buy and on top of that, but but you do have to seal them off. The goal is, is to make them unusable.
The next question is, we're talking about coordinating with the county. If our site's not usable, do they, where do they fuel at?
I I'm not sure that they, I know that they that they use fuel cars and I've seen some of their vehicles fueling actually at fueling stations around town. I'm not sure that they actually have a fueling center.
Okay.
They they may not have. If they do, it would just be for gasoline. They they, I know they don't have enough diesel vehicles to justify having the diesel, consuming the amount of diesel fuel that we consume weekly.
Well, and the the reason I'm asking is if our site would not work out, they have a lot of property, do we use one of their properties? So that might need to be.
That's what I was gonna ask, is there, is, are we looking solely on putting this back at the bus garage site or are we looking at other potential areas in the county to put this?
Joe and I had that conversation. My only concern is I would, I I would really like for it to be close enough so we could maintain accountability and maintain some some visibility into it. Not necessarily just from a security standpoint, but also from from a, if 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 we were to have a leak at that site, we want it to be close enough to us to where we can get to that fairly quickly and handle it and address it and shut it down. You know, the last thing you want to do is have an offsite fueling location that's isolated and secluded and away from schools, but it takes you ten or fifteen minutes to get there if you have an emergency.
Are they gonna require you to dock the?
The, it depends on what model of tank you get. You either have to, you either have to dock the space around the tank or it's my understanding that you can also buy a tank that has has a built-in interstitial space. The tank that you see here in this diagram has an interstitial space. It has a space between the tank, the inner tank and the outer tank to hold that that fuel if you were to have a leak. And according to the gentleman that sent that to me is that that in most cases, unless your fire marshal just simply demands it, that you would not have to dock that tank.
One of the things that we talked about with with Todd and with Joe is that once we get the engineers in to look at our space, if if we did not have enough of our own property, the county does have a a pretty good amount of property very near ours and had even talked to us in a previous conversation, I think in this room, about when they do some of their work, even us, even letting us use property below them. So part of that conversation could be, if we don't have enough space, to ask them to, you know, deed us a few tents of the maker or whatever was required in order to keep it there. And of course, if that were possible, then you would begin to look at other locations.
Well, that was my next question on this estimate. Is that, they're saying, they're saying shovel-ready. But as I've done tank work, I know that this pad is gonna have to be five foot thick. And also, it's gonna have, if you have to build a containment area, it has to hold the amount of fuel. So you're talking a lot more than this. And if it's not, the ground's not solid, you're gonna have to drive a pile. So we're, it's, we're gonna look at a lot of engineering and the cost could be.
Where the site is.
The cost could be a hundred thousand dollars more, depending on which way we gotta go.
Uh, I I use this, I I.
I know, I know, I just, I just wanna make sure everybody was aware.
I will, I will tell you that that the estimate came off of a an estimate from another district that recently did a tank that was not quite this large. It was in the fifteen-to-sixteen-thousand gallon tank and theirs was right at two-hundred thousand. I knew that there was going to be an additional cost, not only to the tank, but also to the foundation work. And so that's where we, you know, we estimated it, you know, in that three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. But that that is just, that is just assuming that when I say shuttle, shovel-ready, that you're not having to do any kind of of cut work or grading work or moving dirt work to 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 prepare the site around it or around a fuel island to get it all set and ready to go.
So will that be all be subbed? I mean, we're not gonna do, Joe's not gonna go and clean up.
No, we will, we we will hire, I I don't want to speak for Joe, but my thought was, and I think his too, in in talking about this, was hiring, hiring a company and saying, we just, we want a turnkey job, just fix it for us, get it done, take care of all the paperwork, file all the, all the, all the, all the paper, the federal and state paperwork that goes along with putting in a fuel island.
Let the experts.
Hand us the keys.
Well, I think you've done a good job and and I think either way, if it's three or four-hundred thousand, if it's a twenty-year deal, I think it's the best.
There there's, you know, there's plenty, and and that that was gonna be my last thing that I said. I think, I feel like there's plenty of margin in those estimates to to hopefully let you see that that even if we we are grossly under on the estimate for what it would cost, that we still have a a very quick recovery of of our investment in comparison to what it would be.
You're talking four years, e- even at that, so.
You said this is probably gonna be like a two-year project to get it done. So basically, the the estimate of this offsite hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars is, we're gonna incur that for at least two years.
No, just one, just one year. Let me explain that so that so we're, so I I apologize if I didn't, I didn't leave that out there. But my my thought is, is that in year one, our goal is to set up the new tank and get it running and operational. At that point, we're fueling off of the new tank, not off the old tank. At that point, all of that hundred-and-thirty-three thousand would be recovered. Hopefully, if we make this a six-month project, you take that amount, which is an annual cost, and cut it in half as to what the real cost would be. After that, we're fueling as normal. We're just gonna wait to actually take those tanks out of the ground until we've recovered financially from that initial investment and then look at, you know, as I said, the.
And we'll be using the tank hopefully within six months to a year.
Yes.
Okay.
So in year one, we would, we would move, part one and part two would be taken care of, of those three parts that are in that report in a, in the first year. And after that, it's just waiting to 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 find the the timing to remove the.
That makes more sense.
I would suggest that we ask the commissioners possibly, if we wanted to move that timeline up, if they would be willing to incur that cost of the remediation to the old tank. Because it does sit on the old landfill.
Yes.
I mean, it hurt to have.
We we certainly would, we just didn't want to have that conversation with you.
Here we talked to us.
We had it with you.
That's good.
Sure you guys were.
Have you checked the, and this is just coming out of my, off of my head, I guess, but is there any possibility of mobile tanker? Can you pump out of a tanker?
I I thought about that, I mean, we 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 had that.
As a temporary thing? I mean, I'm just, I, you know, I don't know, I'm just.
I don't know either, that that thought crossed my mind.
And to ask somebody if we could get a mobile tanker sitting.
My my only concern, my only concern with that was just the liability of of and the risk associated with with onboard and offboarding fuel from one tanker to another one, if if we, let's say we did that.
I don't, you know, I.
You'd have to have a containment pad for it to sit on. So you're gonna have a cost of a pad fifty-two feet long or whatever and.
Well, I mean, it.
It's a good idea, but I think you.
The other thing, it's not, and and the other thing is you've not only got to get the fuel into it, but you've also got to get the fuel out of it and into our, into our fuel truck. And typically, we filter it in between the, in that process. So as it moves out of the tank into the fuel truck, we filter it to make sure that we've not got any water, any particulates in it before we put it, put it in buses. You know, you're fueling a third of your fleet a day. If if you have a day that, a bad day and have just a little bit of water in it, you're not putting it in one vehicle, you're putting it in a third of your fleet. And so I I feel much better by not taking too many risks there. But we we did have that conversation, at least in my office, about the potential for that. But it gave a lot of us a lot of heartburn in in trying to do that, not not only from a fueling standpoint, but also from a, from a from a safety standpoint.
Does the logistics make it not feasible to call our friends in Buncombe County or Jackson County and say, hey, we need you guys to purchase some additional fuel and let us run our?
We had, we we had that conversation and thought about that. It it is very much a logistical issue. It's it's, you know, it's the cost of of taking a truck to Jackson County. Really, it would, it would not be Jackson, it would more than likely be Buncombe. Buncombe would be the only one that would be equipped with enough fuel and enough reservoir space to be able to more than likely hold us and help us in that situation. But when you're talking about the amount of fuel that both of us run a day, that 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 that's tough, number one, but we have had that conversation. But you're talking about a, you know, uh, losing a mechanic to going over there, so we'd have to pull a mechanic off the road. Our our fuel truck driver has to turn around and drive a a staff car and drives kids to the state line in the afternoon at three o'clock. And so there's no way for him to get off the fuel, there's not enough time for him to get off the fuel truck and do, and go to Buncombe, get fuel, come back. So there's a lot of logistics to that.
But if we do it offsite, we're gonna have to add a person anyway.
Right, right. And so I I I don't mind a bit, I I could certainly make that phone call. I just know how taxing that, we we would not be equipped to to be able in a long-term situation. If it if it were a week, and we absolutely could help Buncombe out of, in that kind of a situation. But we are not equipped to be able to help out long-term in in the amount of fuel we have for us and the amount of fuel it would take to do that. You'd be, you'd be running the fuel tanker up here almost weekly probably to do that.
Right now, if, I know we can't give you the approval tonight, but if we did, what kind of timeframe do you, are you thinking?
I, I think it would.
From now till?
Well, I I think, one of the things I'd say is that that typically, once we get that approval, you you've got a little bit of engineering to do and some some work to do. The lead time on a tank is right at two months. And so you're looking at, at, you know, let's say that we were able to do, to get all this pulled together in a month. That puts us in the middle of, middle, you know, early to middle of July by that point. If we were able to approve that, it's probably gonna take us a couple more weeks before a tank's ready to order. That puts us into July and then you're gonna wait more than likely two months, that's all of August and all of September. And so at that point, it becomes, for me, I guess, more of a timing issue of making sure of how how quickly can we get the concrete in the ground? How quickly can we get that done to, because we want to get that done either one, before we get into cold weather or two, after we get out of cold weather. I don't know that we want to run the risk of trying to pour concrete.
We could be doing the prep site, you know, in July and August.
So it 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 really is for them gonna be a timing issue. But you also have to keep in mind that that we are not gonna be the only, right now, there are, from what I can gather, there there, there is a very small group of of vendors that do this kind of work. And they are incredibly busy right now due to the fact that there's a lot of people that have found themselves in the same place we are where these grandfathered clauses are coming, coming to an end and their tanks are not passing some of these newer newer tests that are having to be done on them. And so I am.
Systems out there that would repair the existing tanks?
No, it would, it would not be cost feasible. We would probably have more money in repairing the existing tanks than we would because tho- those tanks, because of where they are and and because of the age of those tanks, I'm not sure that you could get to the parts that would possibly be broke to fix.
Well, that was gonna be my next question. What was the, have we talked to any experts or professionals about fixing tightening?
That that is.
The tightness problem?
If the tightness problem, if if the company that we're asking to come look at it this next time, that is actually what they're looking at. And if the tightness issue is an issue with with a a mechanical issue outside of the tank, it very well might be fixable. If it's an issue with a weld or with something like that inside the tank that has come loose, you're not gonna be able to get to that to fix it.
I can understand that.
It's just, it's just not gonna, you know, and so really.
She kept saying it's in the top and I'm thinking.
It 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 is in the, it is in the top, but more than likely, from the first, the first guy that we talked to, he felt like it was in the top of the of the actual tank, not the the outside tank. So there's, the tanks at the bus garage are, there's two tanks, there's an inner tank and an outer tank. So there there's an interstitial space between those two tanks. And they feel like that the leak quite possibly could be in that inner tank, in the top of the inner tank. And if that's where that that, if that's where the leak is, it's it's gonna be almost impossible to get to and repair with any kind of fidelity and 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 be cost effective.
You only had the one check so far.
I've had one check so far, yes. I've had one check so far, yes.
The other two could possibly be, maybe as bad, or?
Or worse.
Worse, or?
I stopped the other two tests before he completed them.
Well, you know, as many tanks as has to be inspected across America, you'd think that they'd have some kinda bladder system, or something that went in, emptied a tank, you put it in, and you'd think there'd be something out there.
I mean, logically, I'm saying if we can fix any, any way possible.
That thought was.
The, the, I think that the prevailing thought, especially for older underground tanks, is that no one wants to take the liability of repair, the fear of repairing those tanks and taking that liability on, and the potential that a failure after that repair might come back on your company, many companies have, it's just too great an exposure for them, especially with an underground tank, because in many cases, if, if an underground tank is not monitored correctly, it can leach out for years and years and years, and you can find yourself with a huge, huge debt when it comes to trying to fix that.
I think, bottom line, this is one of those cases where you have to respect the people that know what they're doing, unfortunately, I mean, you know, what I'm getting at is, these are all great ideas, but it's beyond our pay scale, in my mind, and you're playing with something that has a huge liability down the road if you don't do it right, and if we halfway do this, the ramifications are, we're gonna have an environmental impact that we don't want to have, and I think your ideas are great, I think the only thing we can do is just get the experts in here, and then try to keep the costs down as much as possible, and. I don't think anybody wants to halfway do anything. No. But, I think we have to look at every, absolutely every option. Yeah. If, if we sit here and we've thought of something, surely the experts have thought of it, and either, either it works or it don't work.
And I think, just, just to ease your mind, I think that is, that is really the principle behind why we wanted to make sure we had a second opinion before we moved forward, I wanted, I wanted to feel like this was not one technician from one fuel tank testing company that told us that, that it was multiple companies, and that's one of the reasons why we chose a second company to do, to do test number two, we felt like after that test was completed, if, if we, if the results were the same, we would feel much more confident in saying, you know, this is, you know, this is the direction we need to go, this is how we need to fix it.
At this point, have you had two, or?
I've just had one, the second one is scheduled, he was supposed to call back today with a date, I think he'll probably be in the morning before he gives us a date, but I anticipate it will probably take him a couple of weeks to, to get up here, they, like I said, they, they're doing a lot of these right now, and speaking to him, there's a lot of, there's a lot of companies that are finding themselves in the same, where, where they're, they're moving to these new tests, and they're finding that they're not able to pass, especially with an underground tank, and an above-ground tank's a little bit easier to deal with, but an underground tank is, is a whole different beast when it comes to try to repair them.
What do you need from this board to proceed forward?
I'm not sure that, that at this point, now, there was a point when we were fearful that, that this was gonna end up being an emergency project, and we needed to move and to move quickly, at the time that we actually caught, put this on the agenda for the work session, but at this point, I feel like unless, unless you feel like you need a movement to direct us to, to go forward, my thought would be is that, that our staff, Joe and Angie, myself, Dr. Nolte, that we begin to work to, to solidify a site location that will work, work with the county, to make sure that's acceptable in both our and their long-range plans, to begin to not only get bids, but to get an estimate on what it might be, to, to take care of this project, to, to figure out how we're gonna pay for that, where that, where that three, four, however many thousands of dollars is gonna have to come from, and, and then bring that proposal back to you for your approval.
I got one more thing for the group, and just to be thinking about, if we go through the whole process and everything, and we get to the point of having to remove the tanks, you know, we're told they gotta come out of the ground, it's two hundred and fifty thousand plus, is there, and nobody might not know, we might have to find out, is there some kind of, where we could get a grant for cleanup or something?
It.
Might offset some of our.
I will say, it depends.
Right.
We will, we will more than likely, if we have to take those out of the ground, be on the hook for the actual removal of the tanks, we could, if we find that there is any kind of leaking under those tanks, we could apply for some grant funding to help recover that cost, it is my understanding that if we do apply, do become eligible and apply for that grant funding, it is a reimbursement cost, we would pay for it, and then they would reimburse us for that cost if that were the case.
And I just basically wanted to throw it out there, so it would be on, if, it'll be years down the road, but.
The other thing, we've not let Joe say anything, and I know he's talked to Todd about this, and me about this, and just give him an opportunity if we've forgotten anything, or he has anything else.
Just keep us posted, and if we need to take action to get things rolling, just let us know, it looks like you're starting into a process that's gonna be pretty intense, so just keep us posted, and, thank you. We don't need to put anything out in the gin to.
I don't foresee anything.
Just keep moving.
He's gonna have to get it looked at again, I mean, he's gonna have, you're gonna have to get somebody else to come in and, and check.
It's rolling, yeah. I think the next two things is get the second person to look at it, and then a group of us meets with the county, and we share with them the, all the information, and then we should be able to give you a, a good bit of information, just trying to be as positive as possible, I think the, the, the potential cost is, over a couple budgets, is very tolerable, you know, we're sitting there with a good bit of capital that I've showed you a couple of months ago, not that we can't use it for things, and then we'll be into a new budget year in a month, and so over a two-year period, unless we have some kind of catastrophic problem, we should be, we should be pretty good, plus we may get help, you know, from the county or other sources, and we'll certainly pursue those.
Absolutely, absolutely, if, if we have, if we have a meeting, I have more information, but we're not quite ready to bring a proposal to you, I will, I will absolutely, either to building grounds, or to this group as a large, be happy to come back and share an update on where we're at.
Good job. Anybody else have any questions? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
We're, we're done, as far as I'm concerned, we just wanna make sure you had that information. Okay. Then it's, thanks everybody for coming, and we'll see you Monday night.